...city business and we want to make sure that everybody can be heard. So if you please turn your phones off or to vibrate, that would be helpful. We'll begin this evening with the invocation given by T.J. Wilkerson.
Oh Lord, our Father, our God, we come tonight thanking you for the opportunity that you presented for us. We come thanking you for all the ones who lied, we have touched, who, those who have served in capacity of leadership. We thank you for this administration, Lord. We thank you for the officers who serve every day, for officers protecting, serving, offering their lives instead. Most of all, Lord, we thank you for your darling son, Jesus, who humbled, bled, and died for our sins. Lord, thank you for all that you do and all that you intend to do. In our name, in Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance, United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas flag?
I am the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to me, Texas, one city, under God, one and indivisible.
That's the first time ever since I've been mayor that the whole room was in unison. Great job, everyone. All right, so the visitor and citizen's vote, we did not have anyone asked to speak this evening, so we'll get straight to the consent agenda. First item of business on the consent agenda. Item number one, matters related to the approval of the May 11th, 2021 regular meeting minutes. Item number two, consideration of possible action regarding adoption of a banking resolution for all city of Montgomery banking accounts. Council, you can take these individually or accumulatively?
Cumulatively.
What is your pleasure?
Accumulatively. I make a motion that we accept them accumulatively.
Second.
As you have said that we accept a consent agenda cumulatively, this motion is debatable, amendable, and requires mandatory vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda cumulatively, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the consent agenda accumulatively. Consideration of possible action. Item number three on your agenda. Consideration of possible action regarding affirming approval of funds, economic development grant request that was approved by Montgomery Economic Development Corporation for $20,000.
And Mayor and Council, this item was presented at the M E D C meetings of April 19th and May 17th, 2021, meeting the requirements of being read at two with their study separate, with also the subject of a public hearing at the M E D C on May 17th, 2021, which is also required for the request such as this. As this item has to come to City Council, it's in excess of $10,000, and so council's oversight requires that council must affirm any expenditures of E D C that are over $10,000. Enclosed in your packet with the farthest same items I presented to the M E D C board directors for his consideration at the May 17th meeting. These include a narrative attempting to quantify financial value associated with the project, as well as some description for value of the project that may not be easily quantifiable. Also included is recent newspaper articles regarding Breckin Stronghold, additional supporting documents that start with their previous work, a title here, Stronger, and then end up to the standard M E D C performance agreement, which outlines several special conditions that would apply to this item and other supporting documents. The item was approved by the M E D C board on May 17th with $10,500 of the $20,000 funds being budgeted from the economic development grant category and $9,500 from consulting professional services funds within the M E D C budget. Those funds were under the consulting area for professional services. They were voted in originally for the M E D C to have tourism-related videos made, and that did not happen through this year. Because of the pandemic, the year did not play out as the M E D C planned. I think that's no surprise to almost anyone, or probably any local government there. So part of the items that will be conducted by the quester of the grant on behalf of the city. They will produce a two-and-a-half-minute tourism-related video using the actors who are in the film. And that will be provided to the city for the city's use, and they also may jointly use it as their promotion for the city as well. And also to be delivered by the grant quester to the city will be a number of still digital images from their filming that will be included scenic and iconic sites within the city, so that we would have professional-grade photography that we can use in promoting the city for tourism and development purposes. And the third item that they will deliver separately will be a photo shoot that will be arranged in the city with the actors. And so while service, this is a $20,000 PR grant, a grant request that was approved. Generally speaking, with a grant, you see the money going out, and you only need to see something coming back in. You hope the long-term return will be seen and met. With this, there is at least $15,000 worth of immediate value going back to the city in the tourism-related areas, which are items that the E D C had budgeted forward, intended to carry out. And so all of those funds really go for something that isn't just a grant going to support, but I think is a very worthy project. And I told the E D C board when I originally had this come in, I was skeptical to what the city's interest would be. And while I was skeptical that was a good project, I just didn't immediately see where the E D C was supported for what the E D C was for. As I learned more about it, I heard the first episode, talked to the applicant, I really love that to wear the tie-in with the E D C's participation would be, and that is from the E D C's attempts to market the city towards economic marketability as well as tourism revenue. And on top of all of that, that I just gave there, in part the narrative, I was reading through all of that. But the M E D C has quantified down to a per person view, when we're from the items on social media, we are advertising what they call boosting those posts, we have a certain cost that applies, and that cost is over a range. If I don't take anything but the $20,000 and apply that to the project, which I've already said has largely value behind it for other reasons, even at that total cost projected across the anticipated viewership, we would be reaching the city's sights in front of people from a marketing perspective at a lower cost than what we already used for social media. So I think that is also a value that the city council should consider. And on top of that, in the non-quantifiable cost area, and we receive more to that, the project is intended to help people improve awareness to and show options to suicide for suicide prevention. And I think that is something that is just so difficult to quantify, I can't put a number on it. But that's where I originally saw it as being a worthy project, I just didn't know when to say that value. But it obviously addresses all the life issues which do fall within what the E D C interests. With that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Weaver, give you a bit of additional information. And if you have any questions, by all means, ask him.
Thanks to the City Council for having me and the residents of the city being here. I'm an actor on the show, but I also take care of the marketing and the development, the fundraising essentially for the show. We raised over $400,000 for the show, and we're asking for a $30,000 grant. I would like to personally appeal to the business owners, the residents, the City Council on a different level, and that is the impact that we're trying to have with this show is to preserve life. Essentially, we're combating teen suicide and depression. So while it's entertainment, and we believe that we've created something very entertaining, that there's a bigger impact that we're looking for, and that is to shine light in very dark issues. Teen suicide, every county and every city in our county is being impacted by teen suicide. I think Montgomery has, I just sat down with a friend of mine and we talked about his daughter. We had a friend here in Montgomery, she killed her life just a few years ago. And so because it's such a dark issue, there's not a lot of people talking about it, but it's a very real issue, and it's something that we have, I believe we have to attack from multiple angles. We are attacking it in the media. And there's very rural, destructive media going on out there, that's probably needed to know. This is just the opposite, and we believe that it's going to tell a story to hope, and that we're going to ultimately be able to save lives through this show. We're also creating augment materials, there are wordbooks that can be used for six to eight-week studies that go along with the show. So if a church or a booster group or a high school club wanted to watch this TV series, they could also get hold of this wordbook, take a group of people through this study, and learn about teen suicide and aggression, and then combined, we believe that through that entertainment and through the message in the show, we're going to be able to do a lot better through this. So that's what I'd like to share about the show. I think I can take any questions that you have, and share on any other aspect.
Mr. Weaver, when I was at the M E D C meeting, when you gave your presentation, you brought up a very interesting fact about Stranger Things. Would you please share that with the council?
Sure. We look for a show that would be comparable to the age group and the town that it's filmed in. And we found a town called Jackson, Georgia. And the town of the show that actually takes place in Indiana, but because it's filmed in Jackson, Georgia, the Stranger Things show, which is out on Netflix, they realized this tourism phenomenon where people are driving to the locations where the show is shot, and they're driving there just to see where the film is produced. We believe that we have a very real opportunity. Because the city is very iconic and the shots that we've chosen to use in the film do stand out. It's a neat-looking town, and we believe that the show that we're creating is edgy and relevant, and we believe it'll attract an audience, just like this town has. And the town has really benefited, they grab onto it. There's local restaurants that have Stranger Things items on the menus, and they retail shirts there, and it's just, it's got a ton of tourism in the town. So that's the comparable we look at. Our show was just presented to Netflix last Friday, so we don't have results, and we probably won't have results until probably the end of June or early July, but we're very excited about that.
And Mayor, I might add, I'm not sure Mr. Weaver might say this himself, because it would have maybe a caveat itself on the back, but I'll go ahead and say it because I have the information. Breckin Stronghold has already been entered to at least, I think it's between 13 or 15 film festivals or more. They were named semifinalists at the Way to Go Family and Friends International Film Festival. They were selected as teams international film fest-- I'm sorry, the team film festival. International Film Festival. Just recently at the Dreams Come True Film Festival, they were nominated seven separate categories, including Best Feature Film, and two actors were nominated for Best Lead Actor, and two actresses were nominated for Best Lead Actress in addition to those other categories. They won awards at the Braxton International Film Festival for the Best Television Series, and they won awards in four categories, including Best Television and Best Film for Content at the Content Film Festival. So if there's any question about the quality of the product, I think that's been borne out by the fact that they've been entered into and are winning some awards at these film festivals.
So I don't think there's any question that it's a worthy cause. I have a couple other questions, though. On the two-and-a-half-minute commercial that they're going to make, is it going to be more generic geared so that it can be used exclusively for the city of Montgomery? I know you're also talking about using it for a marketing tool at the beginning of the movie, and then us to market your show, so like a reciprocal kind of arrangement. I only worry about the M E D C goal being to further the economic development. So is it going to be more geared towards what the M E D C originally set out to do? Or are we gearing it more towards the theme of the show?
That's a great question. The way that we have presented it is to, this would be a tourism and marketing video for the city, and we would use it to help promote that for you guys as a partnership. But it would be very city-focused, and we would include iconic shots, nice street shots.
We like our posts.
Include some of the iconic locations that we use in the TV series, so it's tied directly with the show. But this would be for the city, that's the main reason.
If you haven't seen the trailer, or you've seen the first, I had the pleasure of seeing the premiere. There are shots downtown, so it's going to bring people downtown, which is one of our big drivers, right? It's not the stuff on the edges of town, of the metropolis, but it's coming into the middle of town, which, those are selfie spots, and those are, that's become a huge big deal. We're, with the shot of the show or the shot of anything, I mean, people still go to Smithville, Texas to take pictures of the water tower from Hope Floats in 1902. So I mean, they're still economic drivers, you know, decades later.
Okay, my other question, sorry, I have one more for you, is this probably geared more towards Richard. I mean, on the M E D C grant application, I did notice that it's typical of a $5,000 grant, this is a $20,000 grant. So let's say that we fully expect for this to be successful, because they have standing reputation for it to be successful. Let's just say that two years from now, they're coming back again, asking for an additional $20,000 or more. Are we going to set a limit, or M E D C set a limit of what they can continue to come back and ask for?
Well, part of the reason for setting the limit is just to avoid larger requests that couldn't have merit. They do, the M E D C does reserve the right to consider larger requests. And they have a budget they're generally bound to, and of course, anything $10,000 or more has to come to City Council for approval. The council has a cycle authority, we also have oversight over the approvals of budgets as people are participating. As to what would stop them from coming back in the future, obviously, there would be, you know, anyone who could apply can stop them from filing an application. You know, that becomes a judgment of M E D C, you know, as to, well, we've already approved a grant, why would we want to approve more? Is there merit there, is there not? I think that should be considered individually. I don't think, certainly not in my experience, and I don't think prior to my experience, M E D C has approved a second grant for any entity, so I don't know specifically why they would start. Now, if we're talking farther in the future, and there's a whole new project, I think that would be more likely to spin on some rather than as a follow-up to existing projects.
But there's no kind of policy, as far as you know, that caps the amount of award for so many years?
No, but that's where it's up to the board itself that's putting plates there to make that determination.
And if it drives a half million people to our town in two years, they'll come back.
Two questions from myself. First, I'll take, I should see you again. As far as the credits on the show, how do I know exactly where Breckin Stronghold was filmed of? Once this goes to Netflix, and we're, I hope it does, right, I'm watching this on your side, country, it's at the very near, it's going to say Shaw location, Montgomery, Texas.
So you guys will have location credit in every episode, but the meat that is, is in our, what they call an opening sequence. I don't know if you guys watch Stranger Things series, but they usually play a little bit of the show, and then they go to a, basically an opening sequence that happens every episode. Well, in our opening sequence, we show iconic shots of Montgomery, including the state men, birthplace of the Texas flag. We have fictitious papers, like we got the Montgomery Herald, I believe, in there that. So there's identification in every episode at the front of every episode to include multiple monument signs, it's very distinguishable. So you guys will be upfront in the show every episode because of that opening sequence.
Richard, obviously, M E D C was planning on doing something similar before. How much did we have set aside or approved for that last year? Do you recall?
And I can tell you, in the overall category for professional services, there was $49,000 budgeted. That wasn't all for making videos, it was all the contracted marketing and tourism, social media, all that. Of which, as I recall, around $15,000 to $20,000 was intended for videos. So, well, this wasn't exactly what was intended. I think it's fully in spirit of what was intended.
Do you have any faith-based sponsors?
We do. Thanks for that question, it's a good one. Most of the individuals and businesses that have gotten behind this, and the four churches who have sponsored the show, have done it because of our message. And our message is, essentially, I don't want to ruin anything, but I play a detective in the show, her son is on the edge, taking his life. The opening shot of the show is him up against a moose, he is very concerned, he's taking his life. And over these, over the eight episodes, he walks away from that idea and finds a hope in Christ, and a passion for life. There's a lot of other things that are addressed, and is entertainment, but the message is strong.
I saw the one you showed at the Montgomery High School.
Yes, sir.
And at the end, maybe I missed it, he had like hit lines or moments that people could call if they're going through something?
There is a suicide hotline at the very end of every episode.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Now, you said earlier, it was a, you know, I know you said kind of dark thing. Now, the scene that you show from Montgomery, and if I'm on the bridge, they're not going to entitle me to come and stand on the clocking.
No. No, so we're dealing with dark topics, and I think that keeps the issue hidden. However, our message is that there's hope, and we are dealing with dark topics on the show, but our message is there is hope, and that's, I mean, that's upfront, very early in the show. So it's an inspired message, and it's entertaining also.
Is Montgomery County still number two behind Smith County and Bayle? And all the others?
I know Montgomery County is up there. I believe it's by, I think it's Travis County, which I think is number one. It's up there, it's a really suffered teen suicide.
Terry, I want to ask one more question about the ratings for the show, as far as, I do, you know, sure, this is. What is the rating for the show as far as appropriate age?
It'll be PG 13.
Okay. We watched it over my son, it was seventh time, we watched it over the high school, and the opening scene honestly scared him. I'm just being honest, we were expecting that, you know, so I was just wondering if that's how it is going to be rated?
Yeah, I wanted to point that out. I tried to caution people before watching it that that night slipped away. So we need to get as many views as in front of the show. And we believe, now, we consulted with suicide research centers for the way to present this. We can't present it too graphic, because we know that has negative effects, and I actually have some research that shows have actually glorified suicide and caused an increase in suicide. There's a show called 13 Reasons Why, and that had a horrible effect, double-digit increase in suicide three months after the show.
Not just suicide.
Our show is the exact opposite, and so I brought that research, if anybody wants to see that.
But wasn't that the show that, wasn't that the show that the high school hazing incident occurred as example of the 13 Reasons Why? It's one of the things in that show, too.
It is.
So it would be nice to not have a negative example.
My last question, Terry, is what specifically will this $20,000 be used for?
So it'll be used for post-production. Right now, we have one episode filmed, and it's actually completed, it's the one we're taking to film festivals. We have three more episodes that have been filmed, but not for post-production. So we've got to do all the coloring, all the editing, and just editing, the editing of one episode is a $10,000 shot, essentially. So this would cover the editing for not the coloring or the scoring, just the editing for two episodes.
I'm having a hard time finding any reason not to. That said, $20,000 is a lot of money, we realize that. But I think, Richard, y'all did a good job of presenting the efficiency, business to marketing and return aspect. If we were to try to accomplish anything close to this magnitude, it would be far more costly. And so I appreciate that fact, and of course, being a minister, I'm going to do everything I can to get behind it. And in my own church, we talked about, and I've got an article here from Judge Mack, or Judge Mack was involved in the article in July, and the COVID was not the cause, but could be a springboard type of thing. And so my church has been concerned about that. And so we do need to have a way to reach out to kids and people that are hurting. And so I'm a twofold yes person. I voted for it, and I'm very strongly in favor of this.
Well, I'll make a motion that we accept this request as presented.
Second.
It is removed of second, we accept the request as presented. This motion is debatable, amendable, and requires mandatory vote. It is open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the item as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the item as presented. Item number four on your agenda.
Thanks, Terry.
Thank you, Terry. Consideration of possible action regarding adoption of the following resolution. A resolution of the City Council of Montgomery, Texas, supporting the city of Montgomery's application to the Texas Department of Transportation's 2021 Transportation Alternatives Set Aside TA Call for Projects, MLK, Clepper, and Bessie Owens' sidewalks.
The city has admitted for these sidewalk funding projects through TechStop's 2021 Transportation Alternatives Program. The resolution by a government body supporting the project application is required as part of the process, and I get the state's corporate assistance to do this, right, and to direct your planning and development for the city to present the details on these. He is the one pursuing this grant through TechStop.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, it's good to see you. First, I developed these programs through TechStop two years ago. I'm not that I'm real too late to make the application. What TechStop does every two years is they alternate. This program, which is the transportation alternatives, and by alternative, they mean an alternative to an automobile. So they fund projects that are either what TechStop calls on-system, which is on their roads, or off-system, which would be like on our streets. So in two more years, they will offer the Safe Route to School program. And so, and they alternate those two every two years. So the Safe Route to School is 100% grant-funded or TechStop-funded. The Transportation Alternatives, which is this project, is 80% TechStop-funded, 20% is a local match. One important thing to note, I would be disingenuous if I didn't say, we pay for it all, fine. I do want to be clear about that, it's reimbursed from TechStop on that. And so we looked at two projects. One was on MLK, it was just moving against the city limits, down to Humtime Park. The other is just moving downtown from the British Street and Clepper intersection around to the bottom of the hill on Bessie Cox's. So with that, what this reservation does, this is, this is something that we have to have as part of the application. If we didn't want to do this, we would stop the application here, because we don't want to further. But I'm super excited about these, and happy to answer any questions that you have about them.
So the sidewalk on MLK to Community Center, or I guess we'll call it Bessie, there's no way to do that one as the 100%, as the transportation to schools, since it's going right there to Lincoln Elementary?
So any sidewalk we build in the, so when they look at their Safe Route to School programs, any sidewalk we build in the city would qualify for the Safe Route to School, you know, program. It's just, in order to do that 100%, we would have to wait two years in applying that cycle of funds. So the reason we're doing it, again, because it's, I think the way this is like, we're in two and a half miles into school. The schools are just the place that if you, you know, overlap those schools and down the ground. Again, any sidewalk that we build, it's just a matter of you wait every four years for the Safe Route to School program to come up. Because it's, again, it's on a two-year alternating cycle.
So my real first question was, are we considering a project from MLK to Clepper anytime soon? And what I hear you saying is that in two years from now, we can apply for 100% funding from MLK to Clepper.
Right.
Because that would give a safe route to school for the rest of the kids that may not walk that direction. We're really building it to walk the other direction, but.
Exactly, exactly. You know, that one will work in both ways. Obviously, that's a much smaller project, and has a higher price tag, and certainly one of those ones that you really maximize that 100% straight money.
And on the other project for the downtown, I'm sorry, I have the streets mixed up, this one's Bessie Owens and Clepper. So on this one, is there a way to extend the sidewalk all the way up Clepper to 149, or does it do that? And I just can't see it on this map. It looks like a South Side Prairie.
You know, if that's the direction the council, you know, would like to go with that, we can amend our, so this was under preliminary application. The detailed application is due in two weeks. We can make those, you know, those types of adjustments. We stop it very easily if it's connected to, you know, albeit it's very. We stop it very easily if it connected to, you know, albeit a very small sidewalk that you don't already know you built, it does, we didn't stop it.
It's just not what I'm doing. I just worry about the parade route. That's always the parade route, is Clepper right there. And when those cars are coming and going in any direction, I have personally been one with my family to jump into the ditch to get off the roadway, because there is no right of way to walk on that. So if we went all the way up to Jim's Hardware, which is where you're going to expect all your parade participants to park, and to the back of that old elementary school, then that gave a sidewalk between the two, so that no matter where you parked, you could walk to the parade and walk back safely.
Right. We didn't stop the parking there on one side.
If my math is correct, that's only $81,000 that the city would pay for all of this sidewalk, of both of these projects? That's fantastic. I do have a question, though. On Bessie Price Owens, there's already a sidewalk, although, I mean, 100%? No. But it's, it's ridiculous.
So the issue with that sidewalk, the amount of people shooting through, and you can look at Bessie Price Owens, it's before being in those houses, the sidewalk was there. So when the contractor did the curb cut for the driveways, they took out about five feet of sidewalk on either side of the driveway and did whatever they needed to do to transition, as opposed to going to the driveway and going with the sidewalk. The sidewalk, you know, in fairness, the sidewalk had already settled a bit, you know, leaned a bit, and was looking out of the way.
Now, how many levels have been broken on the sidewalk? Because it's very...
For the library, with, again, memory cards, you know, certainly something, and it's on the inside, it's, has been on the city's radar. I know that Mike was talking about it in the past about, you know, we had calls about either the range deal, which was the bottom of the hill, or the slopes, again, on the driveways. So we know that we had to do something, and we wanted it. This gives us an opportunity to essentially get for just a little more than what we spent just a half, looking at a mile sidewalk into, you know, different functions. So we, we probably, a little over half a mile, we just, I guess.
Is your time factored into the application process preparation here, the $4,000 to $5,000? Or no? Under the funding summary, you have, the current fiscal year expenses would be $4,000 to $5,000 in application preparation. Has your time been factored into that, too, or no? That's just, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I think is possible, is, you know, without trying to spend every single minute of my time, you know, on, you know, the engineers, that's, you know, the contracting and consulting guys, you know, they're down to the, you know, to the minute. I certainly spend a lot of time on them, but again, it's, it's kind of over the month, and it's, we've really got to, I mean, I waited two years to get to this point. I'm really excited about, you know, getting the chance to win this project.
As you can tell, you know, Dave was really quite enthusiastic about, you know, certain projects around the city, and against the, something that addresses mobility and development areas. Those areas, I think, really puts a lot of effort on. Since you pointed that out, Julie, I just want to emphasize here, the $4,000 to $5,000 is the expenses that we expect to this fiscal year. And for these projects, you know, the bulk of those expenses would go into the next two fiscal years. So we're not talking about a budget for this year. We're talking about expenses. We will go ahead and plan it in future quarters, if you know what wants us to pursue this.
Even those application expenses are reimbursed under what I'm seeing here, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. I just want to make sure we're documenting them now, so that we can get all of it back later.
There will be the possibility of seeing what this will look like with a sidewalk going all the way on 149, as well as, I'm going to get greedy here, right? The top here, I like to write cars in the Berkeley, connects to that sidewalk here. What if we took a crosswalk and went ahead and went all the way to racetrack lane there? Can we do that as well? For those kids not in the raceway, Chris?
That's probably right.
They probably give us, trying to challenge too much and discourage, you know, candy with right or left right now. Reason we didn't go that whole way is, you know, back to the original discussion, Texas Department of 149 improvements. The slopes there, as she goes down, you know, on 149, make it where the solution is something that's called a sidewalk, whether it's called a shared use path, whether it's called a, you know, some type of a, you know, some type of a lane or a path that's not a, you know, a sidewalk. And again, that's probably the act of the skirt. The accessibility rules is just if you drive a street wheel, you can't go by sidewalk. But to answer your question, there's going to be a lot of that, I said, the problem that was, you know, can't get this one, you know, getting to that 100% funding, that's the one, you know, that's the next part that we have. The only other, you know, thoughts behind not building that is not knowing what kind of stuff is going to be on 149. If we can have an idea of kind of what they're willing to do there, you know, with that path, which is we didn't export this time, just can't take out a budget. I was starting to get scared of this.
Sarah, do you feel like in two years from now, we'll have a better understanding about the downtown improvements and that roundabout and stuff that we're talking about at that same intersection?
Well, I do, and I'm also looking at, if you look, the comprehensive plan, it goes to like Prairie. I mean, that's part of the...
I just don't want to, yeah, put a sidewalk in and rip it out.
Well, right. And Dave, by the, by your photo, is it on the south side or the north side of Clepper?
It's on the south side.
Okay. Just making sure that I was, yeah.
Take on, on, in that case, sidewalk, how to take that fund, isn't that a county rule?
It's two ways. So they will fund off-system sidewalk, what they call off-system. There are off-systems, our officers, right? Because those are our streets. They will, you know, where, where I made the case to them on the MLK sidewalk was that, so you guys don't know what you're going to do yet on 149. While we figure that out, we're going to build this nice sidewalk here that we're going to be where it can connect just as soon as you guys have those plans settled. Because again, it started in, had Andrew's Ranch, you know, had a big impact because it's, oh gosh, if we try to build a sidewalk over this town, we're going to have to look bridge, and, you know, you go to bridge, you're into, you know, $400,000 trying to get the best bridge possible. The credit is probably a low estimate, you know, I'd argue we haven't had any idea. But, you know, if we're able to do that with Andrew's Ranch improvements, that we talk about with the GLO funds, using the bridge in Texas Department's, you know, where this is essentially just a cove that doesn't have a lot in it. But if we can get enough there, because one of the differences, if you notice on some of the costs, with these projects, there's reasonably close to the same length, reasonably close to the same slope, some things are dealing with. But one of the differences is having to extend the cove there on MLK. So if we had to do it at a larger scale, down by 149, again, it would be, it wouldn't be 20%, you know, 20% of the project would be more than I could stand prepared asking for.
And you have it presented in two ways, where we take one, MLK first, and then Clepper second, or you have it presented where we do both simultaneously. What is your recommendation?
I would also try and do them both at once, because, I mean, that's, you got a three-year fund inside or a three-year, we end up to spend that money after we've earned that money. If we needed to break it out, then we certainly put it at the same, we do it at the same, we get our money back.
Now, are the grants two years from now? Are they contingent upon this grant being completed in order to get the next grant? If we're talking about doing 100%? Perfect.
So if we were to get it on one of these, we did, I mean, we can submit it again on the Safe Route to School.
I'll make a motion that we accept this resolution as presented, and we move forward with both simultaneously, if possible.
As second.
Second. It is removed as second, that we move forward with this resolution as presented, and recommend doing both projects simultaneously. This motion is debatable, amendable, required before we vote, open for discussion. All those in favor of adopting this resolution and starting this project simultaneously, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the resolution as presented, along with working those projects as presented.
Thank you, Dave.
I think it's, I think it's, just that you could have asked us for anything on transportation. It's probably what I've given.
Number five on your agenda, consideration of possible action regarding the award of the contract for water and sewer operations and maintenance services, and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract.
The city's RFP for water and sewer operations and maintenance services. We review on May 6, 2021, the Director of Public Works. And the public was formed under the primary reviewers of what was submitted. At this point, I'm going to introduce Mike Luthroy, City Public Works Director, to go through the details of our recommendations.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilor. So we reviewed the bids, we, you have the tabulation sheet in front of you. What I'll start out by saying is, so you're comparing four companies here, but it's not apples to apples on all four. Two of the companies did not provide the full bid that we asked for. So what we asked for was basic operations and any preventative maintenance to be included on all facilities. So your two that included that was H2O Innovation and Infomart. The other two, you're going to see them, they're low prices, and you're going to think, why has this guy picking the higher price? But it's because those are only for basic services. They did not provide any preventative maintenance involved, which is a large proportion of the contract.
Does that mean they really don't want our business?
No, I don't think it means that. I don't know, they just didn't read it right, or, I don't know. But I did follow up with all companies, and was told, yes, that, from the other two that did not include, they were told, or they quoted time and materials, whatever it took. So, you know, we want to know what it is up front. I don't want to be surprised a year down the road on what the actual cost ended up being. So not getting any one of the companies, just, it just wasn't bid that way. So the two that, the two that you're comparing would be Infomart and H2O Innovation. I'm making the recommendation to, recommendation to stay with H2O. What we are currently paying, if you, if you figure out basic services and preventative maintenance together, we're basically paying $103,000 a year right now. So the price is going up a little bit, but that price also includes adding four lift stations that we don't, that are not regularly checked. We have four small lift stations that service one house or a business. We added that to the rotation to make sure that they're checked like they should. So that's the difference in price. One of the main factors was, the decision to get to stay with H2O was cost of materials. So they're proposing a 10% on their cost plus on all materials, whereas Infomart was at 15%. They're also proposing 0% markup on disinfectant chemicals, which is what they're at now, whereas Infomart is at 15%. They've also proposed a $3,000 max on cost plus. So if it hits the $3,000 mark, basically it gets a free review and then passes straight through to us for the right thing. That is my recommendation. I know there's a lot of numbers on here. I'd be happy to answer any, any direct questions you have on any of them. Another factor, by the way, I will throw one more, another factor was the previous traffic inspections. So those are not costs that are directly paid, well, they're paid by the city, but they're reimbursed by the business owners. And I liked the $45 a month versus $60 a month. Those are direct costs that are passed on to business owners, and I thought that was a significant factor. So I will be happy to address any direct question you have, but that is my recommendation as we stand with this to it. Now, the new contract, I did add some wording in, just like we did the Boeing contract, where it will come back for a year, and we review for Council. So we can review it every year. It's a three-year contract, and it'll come back every year for Council to review if we need to add, if we happen to add a lift station or anything like that, that can all be addressed at that time.
Mike, as far as equipment goes, obviously, it pays too high costs a lot more per hour for the equipment, as you can see. Why is there such a difference in their cost per hour for equipment as opposed to the other guys? It's a big difference.
On the, on the per hour?
The shoring, is there a $100 per use?
Yeah, the shoring.
Oh, shoring, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the shoring.
Shoring and the backhoe, and, yeah, yes.
Well, the shoring is $100 per use, whereas, yeah, I mean, haze is 50 per use, the other ones are by the hour, so that was hard to compare, and they're going to charge us $100.
Oh, I see.
They show up with, you know, for half a day, whether it's going to be a flat rain. And honestly, this, so the whole equipment section is really rare to be built for anyway, because we try to do all the leaks, minimal leaks we have, we try to take care of all that in-house. Any of the tasks that are being done, are, this, these charges are going to fall under commercial tax fees, which are being paid by the developer or builder. So it wouldn't be the direct cost to the city anyway. But I mean, I don't know the answers to why their prices are a little more than the other company, but we don't typically see where our prices are, are up in the personnel section. That's where you're going to see guys coming in town to flush the water line if something's dirty, or check on the sewer backup, things like that. They're sending, you know, personnel there. The bottom section is more of a crew or utility group coming in to fix a major leak or something like that, which we do in-house.
That makes sense. So that they're, $300 per use, period.
Yes.
Other guys could be $25 an hour for four hours.
Yes.
Yeah, I get it, sorry.
So we're being $103,000 now, and this proposal's $113,340. So for $10,000, we're going to get, they're going to check four more of the lift stations every month?
Four times a week.
Three times a week?
Yes, right.
Wow, so that's just a few dollars a lift station, almost.
Well, again, unless it's not just a, it's not just a revisal of their original price, it is a complete new, you know, new proposal.
Sure, no, yeah, no, I get it.
But that's how the prices worked out. So they were able to, they were actually able to bring down some of the prices of the preventative maintenance. For instance, the cooling tower, where it was originally bid, it was bid at X amount of dollars, they figured out over the last couple years that they could bring that myself, knowing exactly what they're doing out there, how much time is being spent.
And pass too long.
Some areas drop, some areas have normal inflation, but this is what it is in the bottom dollar end of the day.
I want to make the motion to authorize the city administrator to execute the contract for water and sewer operations and maintenance services to H2O invocation.
As second.
Yes, as second. Authorize the city administrator to execute the contract for water and sewer operations and maintenance services to H2O Innovation. This motion is debatable, amendable, or required before we vote, open for discussion.
Thank you for all the information. It's very helpful to get behind your decision.
It's a lot of numbers and a lot of, it's a lot of stuff.
All those in favor of authorizing the city administrator to execute the contract for water and sewer operations and maintenance services to H2O Innovation, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will authorize the city administrator to execute the contract for water and sewer operations and maintenance services to H2O Innovation.
Thank you.
Next on business on your agenda, number six. Consideration of possible action regarding the appointment of Ward, Getz, and Associates LLP as city engineer and approval of a professional services agreement with Ward, Getz, and Associates LLP for engineering services.
Since the city council meeting on May 11 for 2021, I've worked with Ward, Getz, and Associates to work out a professional services agreement under which they would take over the duties of city engineer and perform the primary engineering duties of the city. And this agreement has also been reviewed by the city attorney. With the approval of the recommendation by the city council, I will work with Paul WGA and Jones Carter to organize a transition of the engineering services for the city. The transition, what I identify, which items will transition to the future, which items will transition to the future, and which ones, if we're dating with Jones and Carter, is a little bit of completion or perhaps technically. Under the advice of the city attorney, we would not be taking specific action related to Jones and Carter. The action to name a new city engineer replaces the previous one, and the contracts we have in place with Jones and Carter will allow us to continue to give us them on certain projects as appropriate, so we can do it. And I do have Brian Getz here to introduce, you know, with Ward, Getz, and Associates. Of course, I can be the all-star, first, Kozmaski. And if you have any questions, you can, I can take those suggestions to the questions who has their firm, they're their interpretation. And at your seats, you have a top heap of statements and qualifications.
I'd just like to point out again that this is still contradictory to the vote on April 27, but I know I've already made that a matter of record. And May 11, I thought that we were just getting an additional bid from your RFQs from January, and that you were going to come back and still present us with an option of three, similar to what Mike just did with water and sewer, great job, and that we could collectively decide on Ward, Getz. I feel like this is just you shoving it down our throats, and it's a $368,000 annual budget. and it's a $368,000 annual budget, and we spent $52,000 with Jones &amp; Carter this month alone. So that's a tough one for me to swallow. And it has nothing to do with the fact that my husband works for another civil engineering firm. It has to do with the fact that it would have been nice, as a city manager or city council, to be presented very much so, like Mike just did, and treated us if we read the minutes.
Well, I'm sorry you got the impression that I was forcing a singular firm down towards the council. I believe what I've done here is exactly the direction I was given from last meeting. I realized that was different than the direction that came out of the previous one. And the difference between the two is that we had the election and we changed on council. And we also had one council member who was not here for the, but Angel, which is why I considered to represent that in council. And it was a different direction.
But we saw a majority vote. Even on April the 27th, there was a majority vote, and it was by the council that's still present on this board right now. So that aside, it was still a directive from this council to you. That was approved by this council.
Yes, and I would give it different directions at the following. So I can only follow one step of those. And if the council would rather I do something different, then I need to get that direction tonight, and I'll be happy to do that.
I feel like we just went through the whole vetting process, and we just did this in January. And because of the personnel, we chose Jones &amp; Carter because of who represented. Chris Kosmowski brought his A-game. I'm sure he had Catherine behind him telling him what to say. But at the end of the day, we chose the person, we didn't choose the shingle above their head where they work eight to five. And so, in my opinion, moving them over to another shingle doesn't, why would we go with the company when we didn't really go with the company, we went with the people? That's what we're doing here. And I think that they have done an excellent job. I think we're in a critical time, they know where everything is. I've repeated this before in other meetings, so I won't go into all of my diatribe. However, if things don't work out too, we could easily divorce them. I mean, that happens too, right? So, but we believe in Chris, who's done a great job. Catherine and Chris are a great team. And they've done well by the city, and they know a lot. And with some new faces on council, I think it's important to keep some consistency. But you don't do your job, you go away.
Exactly.
I'm new on the council, but I heard before I was elected, some of the prior conversation, and it seemed to me there was consistency in the fact that there was confidence in the people over an organization. And I'm very familiar with that management. You go with who you're comfortable with, you go with who you've had confidence at. But I'm also an ex-coach. You have a speed dial U-Haul in case you don't work out. And so that's the, so we're not super committing to the thing. And I think something I heard earlier seems wise and prudent. When you enter into an agreement, you need to review it every year. I would, I like that concept, so.
And again, this is nothing towards Chris or Catherine. This is significantly just that our RFQ process really was poor. And even in January, we didn't get, there was no disclosure from you in January of the seven firms that were bidding, and we got no information like we just got from Mike. Mike laid it all on the line and said, here they are, here's the good, the bad, the dirty, here's what we like, and we don't like. And we did all of our due diligence, and we haven't seen that from you.
Well, what happened with the RFQ process, you know, for the engineering firms, it was set up differently. It was set up by council, you know, that was before those elections. You know, I had advised council at some point who of those seven firms were the original candidates. But that was left to me and a couple of departments to review and make a single expression and bring that back to city council. You know, and so I believe that was a consistent process. And even though it was under advice from the city attorney, you know, since that process was done back in January, you know, the city had already reviewed firms recently. And so that's why we need to go through a full process with this one. And I'm just here trying to follow what city, prevent, present to city council what I believe that it wants. And if the city council does not want this firm or wants to do a different process, city council should advise me of that, and I would do the same.
I would say that Mike, real job, you know, working for the bank. You know, we've built a bank from one branch to $10 billion today off one premise, and it was the people bank with people. And I'm a firm believer in that, and I agree with, I think the move we're probably about to make right now.
So does this mean that the contract stays at January for renewal? Or are we coming back at this now in May of next year?
I think we give them a full calendar here to show us what they got, to perform.
We move forward with the contract with them, the contract, it becomes what we're deciding, so.
What does that have to do with the Jones &amp; Carter contract that's already still in effect that we're not getting rid of? Do we then renew that one in January, and this one in May, and have two that we go back and forth on? And what happens to the RFQ process then?
The city, the city council here and the city in the past have not annually renewed the professional services agreements. They didn't even have, until I started working, a regular process to RFQs for professional services backed companies, which is something I recommend that council do at the minimum for three years, you know, if not soon. And so, this is the last of my recommendation to council going back before the pandemic. We review every single one of the professional firms that works for the city. Yeah. I guess it comes technically to a tie being the last one with the operations bid, because that's also at the same year. And this is a process that in a year or so, I'll say, again, I think we can start going out for the distance. Yeah, we did that with the city attorney, which we didn't hire, we didn't change the terms of that. With the, so the operations company, we determined not to change operations. With the city engineer previously, and my recommendation was to stay with Jones &amp; Carter in January, but it was heavily presented on the, you know, relationship we had with Chris Kosmowski and Catherine Booth, which changed all that in space, in my opinion, which is why I came back to council.
So what I hear you saying is, one year we're going to RFQ again, but the contract's written for three years. So is this going to be a matter of record that in one year, we're going to come back and revisit this? Or are we just going to keep going for three years and not look at anything?
We can do three years, let's do three years.
I'd be happy to a lot of them. And, you know, in the contract, their prices are up for annual renew, which is standard in contractual agreements. And it's like, I believe, you know, all firms should be reviewed annually. The difference between being reviewed as a firm and going out for an RFQ and doing it every three or four months. I would say for professional services, you should do that for all firms, at least every three years, going through a full RFQ process and make them type for work. Annually, I think you should review the companies that you have, which is what process might describe with H2O Services. And you know, if it's to get during exiting, I still think, you know, they should be subject to an RFQ, you know, after a few years. And I say that as someone who, in previously my career, worked 17 years for a company that worked for, you know, local governments. You know, I would, at that time, I put my services up for review, you know, anytime necessary. I believe those companies should do the same.
So that's in the private sector too?
So, you know, you're going to be asking a question, you know, they should be reviewing whoever they are as every year.
It is ridiculous, yeah.
But I would not do an RFQ process and say, I'm doing that every third. So that answers your question.
Yes.
Richard, I'd like to make the motion to designate Ward, Getz and Associates. L.L.P. as city engineer and approve the attached visual services agreement between the City of Montgomery and Ward, Getz, and Associates, L.L.P.
I'll second.
Did you have a question? Go ahead.
Before, before we vote, you know, at least can we get them to say hi? Because I don't want to get them to be like, oh, they don't know who we are. I think that you introduce or whatever.
So who we have here today, this is Ron, one of the heads of our groups. Those of you that introduced this, obviously you know Catherine, I mean, and I know Ward, Getz. And, you know, it's a new name, a new face, and that's why I wanted, I want to hear and introduce and get to know you as it takes, more than just Catherine. Same thing with Jones &amp; Carter, wasn't just Catherine, those were, I'm talking about the ones that worked on things in the city. So we have Ken Chalat, he is our, excuse me, our hydros and hydroling partner. T. Wang, Paul, so T. Wang is actually the brigand group, which is a sister company of WGA, which has a very heavy transportation focus. Jerry Is, he is in charge of the Water Waste Water Group. So what, he has a group of five or six in his, they do a lot of the current renewals for the GPDs, water waste water plants, rates, things like that, operationally stated. And finally, Ryan Getz, at the end, he's CEO of Ward, Getz.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council for having us. Founder of WGA back in 2007. And I understand that you're a professional service company, and a lot of engineers are thinking about the service side. And I understand that our global asset is our people, and we should be reviewed. And I got here by being reviewed over and over and over and over. And so it's an honor being here, and I appreciate you guys taking the time to discuss this. And, you know, I always kind of say, saying, if you look at it over and over, and you can't hide a lot of stuff, then it comes out pretty quick, so. Thank you.
Mr. Getz, you did graduate from Montgomery High School?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Notice this purple on my shirt.
Yes, I did. It's graduation night.
Well, actually, I drove by, I was here earlier, I drove by the old gem that's working in the old school, I think, '98, '99.
Yes.
Is it still there?
Yes.
You know, maybe it just worked out, now I'm asleep, just.
That's right.
Counsel, there is a motion on the table. It has been approved that we designate Ward, Getz and Associates, L.L.P. as city engineer and approval for a professional services agreement with Ward, Getz and Associates, L.L.P. for engineering services. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It's open for discussion.
Richard, is there a way for you to send us the percentages that we're already currently paying with Jones &amp; Carter? So that a year from now, when we're looking at percentages that we just approved here, that we're able to compare something side by side to see, because if Frank comes back and says, I want an increase, how do we know that it's not more than what we are paying for at an engineering firm that we're getting rid of?
Are you talking about how their outlines of the contract?
Yes.
Yes, I can say that too.
Thank you.
And not just you, but, oh.
It would give us something to compare.
Counsel, are you ready for the question? All right. It has been, there's been a motion on the table that we designate Ward, Getz and Associates, L.L.P. as city engineer and approval for a professional services agreement with Ward, Getz and Associates, L.L.P. for engineering services. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will designate Ward, Getz and Associates, L.L.P. as city engineer and approval for a professional services agreement with Ward, Getz and Associates, L.L.P. for engineering services.
Your name's on the vehicle. We just want to make sure we check you out. I know Michael, these guys be looking.
All right, we're moving on to the departmental reports. Number seven on your agenda, city administrators' reports, April 2021. Richard?
As a reminder to everyone, you know, we are recording and streaming our meetings. These are out, they are streamed out live. We know we've had recordings and issues on the microphone, and so we're working on optimizing that. One of the things, you know, I just want to point out is, I think that has been a long-term goal of the council, is that we have meetings that are recorded that come on the website. And I think that becomes a valuable resource for people to view. Most of you, many of you may remember, we started the pandemic. We have a lot of people who are watching those meetings live, over and off that number dwinkle downward. And what we learned was, there weren't less people watching, there were less people watching live, and more than came to realize those meetings having been recorded and posted. They could watch the meetings on their, so they'd go for something that worked well down. And I think it's supposed to be valuable to the public in a way. Not everyone can come here in this building at a certain time when we meet, but we have to meet at a definite time. And not everyone can watch it streamed at the same time. But they can certainly watch it at a time they choose to, fast forward through it, there's a portion that they're looking for. And I think that's a valuable service that we provide to the community, and I just want to touch base on that. Though we ought to add, you know, going forward in the future, starting with what should be the next mail-out, we will be including on utility bills and licenses a QR code where individuals with a smartphone can scan that and get to the log-in screen for their water account, either to make payments or to look up the information. That's something many people see in a lot of places these days. And that adds a convenience to our customers who get the bills, you know.
It won't work for a flip phone though, right?
No, it's got to be a cell phone, so I don't know, but I suspect it, well, it'll have a problem with the flip phone, so.
Is there a cost in that? It doesn't cost anything for a customer to do that, does it?
It does not have a cost to the customers. You know, the, the city for the MEDC does have a subscription for QR codes. And so, yeah, unless we go over 40,000 scans a year, it won't change our subscriptions here. And if we can get a little bit of scans of that, I think that'll be restricted out. So, you know, and we do get a monthly report of scans of the QR code. So while we don't know individually who is scanning, we do get raw numbers. And so we can see, you know, I might be able to report back to you in a month or two. Oh, we had 400 scans, or five scans. We'll get the idea of what is more important to be out there. And then I look forward to having some of that data. The city's administrative and police departments are working together on data determining form for festival events to apples permitted in a larger, larger sheet of paperwork, and consisting off of the last group issued that was done to, done to the ordinances related to those festivals. Well, working with, the city's working with MISD and PSD number two on disaster planning as a larger group effort. The city is also looking at some equipment needs in terms of messaging, and as well as the backup power. And I'm thinking of next month, we'll work in our relationship with councils to approve items that are outside of the budget, but I believe we need for disaster planning going forward. And council may remember, back in the budget timeline, we purposely kept a conservative budget because there was a lot of unknowns. Fortunately, the economy has been better than anticipated in the city. So I believe the money exists that the city has collected, we just have to get the budget, some of those funds. And so we'll look, we'll have the money for those items, we just have to decide.
Would we be able to get the communications and the equipment in place and ready before hurricane season? Or before, I mean, we're, I think we're, I think I won't stop. Yeah, immediately, I guess is my question.
I don't know if the timeline would be on that, but we will have that information when we present it.
And I know generators, that's something we're talking about, and I think that there's a two-year wait or something, and crazy like that.
And I just, I assume the answer will be different for different pieces of equipment that we're talking about. And, but even like with the messaging, we're looking at more than one option. You know, and, you know, we, there are some things that are, can be distributed high-tech, some that can be distributed by lower tech. But I think you need to have to be able to diversify the way you distribute to the people. And, you know, when we have that information for you, we'll try to have what the timeline is for.
Cool. Are you looking at short term and long term also? Like, how do we mitigate just this hurricane season, which starts next week? Versus how do we solve this issue for like the next 20 years on a big generator or something?
We're thinking long.
Look at refresh.
We're not thinking short term, we're thinking long. So, yeah, and, and in terms of some of the things, we're looking at items that can be used in more than one thing. So that, you know, there's something that, not something that's going to sit here waiting for a hurricane or disaster to come, then it gets used, something that has usage beyond just the solar application.
Are we holding back some of the money as a just in case for this season that we aren't prepared for that's coming next week?
Holding back some of what money? What do you mean?
Well, I just mean like, what do we do in the short term when we don't, I don't want to be caught with our tails between our legs. Do we have some kind of a resource for an emergency shelter? Since we know that the community center's not going to work out, we're just partnering with the school and sending people back to Walden? I just want to make sure we have the short-term to you.
We've been working on emergency plans since all of that happened, and it's something that you'll be able to share out, or we're going to be able to share out here shortly. We've been working diligently.
It's not lost on me that hurricane season starts in like one week.
It's not lost on us either. From our perspective, fortunately, parts of hurricane season that are worse for us tend to be later in the year. It's not lost on us that we just have, you know, the possibility of a tropical storm.
And we already had a named storm on the East Coast, Anna, last week, so.
You know, and it is just hurricanes. Obviously, it is a winter storm disaster that was outside of what we have seen here in our eyes.
The curry routes and closed roads, and there's a multitude of.
And, you know, or potentially one major storm system with a tornado away from something in the city, while the answer better, well, it happens to us. You know, we're trying to put the in positions to be as broad as possible.
...more apartments on plus more. That hasn't been approached in the city yet, but it's at least the ones you're kicking around.
And that's under that same plot of land that we can't control what they do, correct?
I need to go back and look. So it's on the opposite side of the street, closer to both landmark works, right there next to the creek. The seven eight track is one that if you feel up, I was partnering with them to drive some land for the pond to offset that drainage. They had a meeting with the, not related to the city, but with the broker on that track, and he said he had sold the command of four apartments. But that's-
So would we have any control over that at all?
I need to go back and look. Plus more was the dividing line, but I can't remember now. I want to say that the PDD encompasses those sides of the street, if I remember correctly.
That's what I, that's what I can't remember.
So I think it's something that we'll just have to talk with the PDD.
So if it does encompass the other side, then the apartments are-
So they're not set up to zoning because it's owned in the PDD. So which allows for a mixed use of development. But the PDD rules still apply to architectural control.
Which is up to the-
Which is controlled by-
And when again does that expire, 23?
Yes.
Yes, there's three different agreements. I believe that was in the original, which is called-
On both of those springs, I think, across from Philip, them developing, where the key property, they cleaned that off. Are they going to do something there?
We haven't talked to them. They have not brought us any kind of plans or cease activity there. You know, we took us several calls together to get some fencing up there around the property. You know, we've got a deal in front of us, a lot of this rain.
It's not a complaint.
But the language has been weird. They have not brought any plans or anything else to us.
And have, Mike, have we turned off any sprinklers since we talked about the usage at Memory Park? Have we turned, I mean, we've had enough rain this month and not water-
We're fine now.
Okay.
Anytime we get several days of rain in the road, we always go with maple and turn off all the systems.
And we went from the early stages of drought to-
Yeah, monsoon.
Yeah, exactly. I think we've had, oh, we've had easily over 20, which is probably 22, 23 inches of rain set part of the schedule here. And a lot of that's come in the last couple of weeks.
All right, thank you.
Uh, the next item is public works, Mike. Mike, being the Public Works Appreciation Week was last week. I hope y'all are fed love.
True.
Because we do appreciate y'all.
Thank you, Miss Amy Crowell for setting all that up.
Yes.
Much appreciated. Much appreciated. On our report, start off with the water side as normal, hit a couple of the highlights. We repaired a two-inch service line on 105, installed a three-inch extension on Ironman and Grover's off Lone Star Parkway. We relocated a meter at, on Seneca Hills Drive, on the wastewater side to clear debris from a main pole and caving crossing, and completed two work orders for Zerstop. Streetside, we said new patio cover at 611 Worsham Street, and painted additional footage of the fire lane on his way. Building and equipment maintenance, we straightened one of the flagpoles at the community center, and completed 18 work orders for general city hall maintenance. Parks side, we replaced the main ride course beam on the charting cabin in Furland, and thus recorded 838 visitors and provided 63 tours for the month. And then we attended a meeting with Verizon to discuss downtown Wi-Fi needs, and completed 26 work orders for maintenance and general issues.
Can you tell me what completed daily removal of bandit signs as necessary means?
So that's any of the, any of your four class signs that end up in the rideways, pressure washing, anything like that. It's a-
I thought you were saying it's such street signs.
You just drive down 105 and you, and you drive out of the city, which you know is a significant difference.
Yes, thank you for the clarification.
It's a daily chore, but guys are all aware at all times and all look out.
Just curious why at 154 Seneca Hills Drive, you relocated a meter?
So what happens sometimes on the development stage, developers will come in, build neighborhood, all meters reset in place. As they build the individual houses, especially in Colosseum, ends up with a meter that might need to be shifted a little bit. The builder pays that expense for us to come out.
Y'all might have to come to the house next to me and do that too. I don't see any way that driveway is going to make.
It happens occasionally, and they know the files, and they pay the fee upfront, and when we come out, we relocate it. So if there's not any questions on the report, I'll just hit real quick all the fair law issues, you know, all the bugs. So we received reports from both of those springs and fair laws. We, so a couple of people called Texas Partial Wildlife, called City of Calver. They run a full wild hog eradication program. They have a guy dedicated to trapping and disposing of hauls. So what we've done is we order trapped, the trap actually arrived today, working on a, a right entry for the neighborhood. The piece of property that we're going to put the trap on is owned by the POA, so it's easy access. We just have to sign a legal document. Actually, I had the city attorney right now, where you come back from TML earlier today. So hopefully within a week, we will be able to set this trap up and start catching some wild hogs and catch some herds for the rest of it.
How the party? Is this coming on an additional cost to the city or, because I mean, I'm sure there's a few good old boys that could take care of that for us.
Well, I'm sure there's a couple of good old boys that could take care of it too.
No, no, no.
I, we got 16 of them and sent here and I remember a couple weeks ago, we had a trap, a guy come out, set the trap, so.
Well, that's what we're looking at. Got the police, we talked to the police chief about it also. So we've got a full program around the act as soon as, as soon as we get it to reality. Just wanted to give you an update. Any questions on the report?
Thank you, Mike.
Thank y'all.
Number nine, on your agenda, police report from Chief Solomon.
Evening, mayor, council members. You had a word in hand, if you have any questions. There's a couple things I'd like to mention. Our first startup team, 13, will get started. That's a community emergency response team. That's going to go a long way in helping us be ready for these disasters and hurricanes. And so that one will start in July. We already have 30 people that have signed up for that class and will be put on here. So to root for more, give words of management. Second thing, he's wanting to congratulate Lieutenant Joe Melmar. He just finished the LMC, which is Leadership Montgomery County. I went to his graduation. His team took on four projects, and one of the projects they took on was Costa. Costa is a, is a child advocate of Montgomery County, and they went in and recreated the entire, the entire build for these kids. Joe's pretty proud of the work that he done. When you take a look, these, these kids were, were really happy because this, this is where kids go when they can bring that all the safety home. So I want to say congratulations to Lieutenant Mark Melmar for finishing that. Any else you guys have?
Chief, I was out today and I had, again, receiving compliments from your team and officers, and in particular, Officer Say, Saw, Lucy, that there was, she was brought to attention, but I, I continuously receive compliments. So great job to you and your team. Appreciate the-
We're getting it. We've got, we've got a real good group of young men, and we're getting it all every day. I'm getting emails and so, and really feels good. They're doing great.
You know, historically, Montgomery has not had the best reputation. Speed trap, you don't want to get caught in Montgomery, all these good things. And, well, but at least, like, we have officers that have a smile on their track of you, right? Okay, so I just wanted to give you kudos and ad-aways, and we appreciate all you do.
Well, I'm too cheap. I know last weekend we had two services, and also Lucy, she was down, and she had another apartment, but he was, he was on the other end, and they had a, you know, cowboy parade taking a guy to the grave and the horse. And so, and, and she was there from early and helping us take that. And also, I came up and got some cones, and we, we put them out there, and it did, you know, it was amazing how people slowed down just because of, we had cones along the road out there, which was good. And I just want to thank y'all for what you work that you do.
How many officers is in your department circle?
We've got 15, including Command Center and my sister.
Thank you.
And we need to move on.
Line number 10, 41, Kimberly Duckett.
Meeting, Mayor, Councilmember, welcome aboard, new councilmember. For the quarter report, we collected April $40,808.3. The 114 was probably citations left at that month. The court's going to be preparing for our citizens academy tomorrow. In the upcoming months, I'm going to be preparing for the RAD train, this rate of residential defense. I'm an instructor, and so is Officer Griffin. We're going to be with the, with Montgomery County, preparing for this so we can start probably in the upcoming months of handling our own RAD trains here in the city of Montgomery for women and young women.
Incredible. Any questions for the courts? Kimberly, I want to also commend your staff. I was in your office not too long ago, and, you know, during a pandemic, and I grant it, there's a lot of stimulus checks going out, but it looks like you're collecting them according to the collections. So great job, at least. People are paying their fines, right?
Yes, they are.
So, but great job changing.
Thank you. Thanks for the stimulus checks, and we did a court resolution for the month. So that really helped out a lot of the collection department.
Appreciate it. Has that just been this month or the past couple months? Because I noticed that the tickets are down, but the revenue is significantly up. So that's, do you think it's been the same way the whole three months?
Well, just because the tickets are down, the tickets for that month does not fluctuate the month of collections. We have previous, like warrants and things like that, that don't follow our month for collections, for collecting, so.
It's nice that you're paying your debt.
For example, there was a gentleman that lived here and hadn't lived here, I believe, for about a year or so, a year and a half, and he was in Tennessee, and basically told Officer Lozano, na na boo boo, come find me. And, and then called Beck, like an alibi and paid us fine. So, good stuff. Good job. So Richard, you provided us with the utility report?
Yes.
And then water operations. Michael, you're next. Congratulations on giving your contract renewed.
All right, thanks all very much. I wanted to, thank y'all for my report, so I appreciate it. We have your equal operation report for you. Could have paced through if you had additional alerts. There were four this month. They were all due to power-related issues. Tally, you arrived on site on all four occasions, the normal power was running, so we just reset all the monitoring systems and monitored plant, didn't find any issues at that time. And notify Mike about it. He's in constant communication with their, with your energy rad to try to clear up any of those issues.
Do we pay extras for you to come out and reset that, or is that included in our contract? I don't remember.
Emergency callouts are extra.
So is there a way for, on something that's like this, is this simple enough for our guys to be able to, if it is just you go, they go in and the power's on, is there a way for you to teach them how to do it so they can reset it and not have to emergency call out, or?
Well, I mean, that's something that we can talk about, but, I mean, if there are bigger issues, it's, with the, with the way, it's better that we're on site with the department of licensed personnel to take care of it.
You probably paid, paid double then.
Page one, we have your daily overflow trend. Over the, for the hundred, it was 5,713,000 gallons. Daily peak was March 21st, 348,000, and daily average flows 184,300, which we are at 46% of your permit capacity right now. Page five is your, is another overflow monitor report. All samples for the month of April were appliance. Page six, we have your rock water report. We comped the total of 237,000 gallons, flushing at 318,000. We're going to stick to the 96% accountability this month. Up from last month, we were, it was a little low, but we did have some issues for the freeze. To the bottom right, you'll see that we have a total of 1,013 connections reported through your beacon system. And page seven and eight, there's a supplemental charge for council review. Unless there are any other questions, that's all.
Do you foresee any capacity issues with all the rain we've had this month?
No, so your, your permit is based off of the, over the average for the month. So even if you do have a week of rain, you are going to trend up with that week, but overall your average will keep you with the capacity with as much space that we have right now.
And do you foresee any issues in the next year with the chlorine shortage of what it looks like in your contract with?
So the chlorine shortage, I don't foresee any issues because the only, that's how chlorine, the only time we use that is to do cleaning. The disinfection chlorine, we checked with our manufacturer, they haven't had any issues with chlorine gas. We had checked with our liquid bleach wholesaler, and they, they have no issues transporting it out either.
Well, we lack your 0% over cost already, so.
Thank you so much. Question number 13 on your agenda, financial report for April 2021, Anthony Losky.
Good evening, council and mayor. I have your lines report in front of you. Just go over some of the highlights of your report. On page 13, we have your account balances for your general fund. You're currently roughly around seven and a half months of reserve. And then on page number four, you have on your M E D C fund, a little over two years of reserve, and in your utility fund, roughly just shy of a year's worth of reserve.
And I have a question for you.
Sure.
Hotel occupancy tax fund, is that the taxes that we, we're just putting those away that we receive? Hotel taxes?
The only ones that I know are the ones coming from the Caroline House.
Yeah.
Yeah, bed and breakfast. But I know we've got other B and Bs or other places on, over, Airbnb on, but I've just seen that there's a balance here. And so what are we doing with that money? We going to use it for a project later for?
Right now, right now, it's really just accumulating because they're, it's not a high code, and there are limits on, to be used from that fund. And so since we don't have a specific target for it, we're just like accumulating.
Do they?
Hopefully, we'll get a very good proposal that puts a larger amount, and then we'll, and we'll actually have to find a stronger target.
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you, Richard, for that. Moving on, page number five, your cash flow, your general fund. We did receive sales tax in the amount of 215,000, 206. It is the lowest that we have received for the fiscal year. I mean, it's still good for it being over 200,000, but I think some of it has to do, excuse me, with the freeze that happened back in February because that was before this elections. So that was probably the reason why for a little bit of the dip in that number. But anybody else, numbers has been relatively steady. Couple of things that we did for the month. We did pay your T W C and filed the 41 quarterly for the month of April. The one expenditure that, that stands out for this month being yours to the state comptroller, for just, for just under 44,000 for your state terminal costs. Everything else was pretty steady and rolling for the, for the month of April. Moving on to page number 12, your budget. Of course, we received 151,000 above that, 215,000 in sales tax for the month, for the month of April. The rest has been going M E D C. We did receive the base numbers. Since it was a quarterly filing month, we received 400,000 for the month of May, 330 of it going into your general fund, 110 of it going into your M E D C fund. So far in total revenues, what I typically do is I'll, I'll take, I take out the home grants and stuff because I know this is kind of a more, kind of a one-time thing, and looking at it, we're about 375,000 over, and that's, that's doing really, really well. And I know that we do have, you know, the extra money that we plan to spend on different projects and different areas that I know will be taking place around the course of time. On the expense side, everything, for, for seven months worth, we're looking pretty steady. Like right on, or after calculating everything, we're just under a thousand dollars under. So I mean, we're like, why did that number, the total expenses, that we're doing really, really good for seven months' worth of budgetary revenues and expenses?
We should have had you speak first.
That's why I was saying the best of I.
What are the, the home grants for, again, my clarification?
Houses, the five, the houses that were over there.
Okay, is that what, new people, when it comes to community, you're, you're adding pads for the ones we're building?
Yeah, for those who may not be familiar, it was a long-term project the city participated in that led towards the government, but several government funding used to build several homes I believe were supported and, and that can be, and that can be, and that can be, and we did have some names that had requested, should there be more funds available in the future? You know, if anyone knows of anyone, and my call, we are accumulating a list for those things, and if there becomes another opportunity, we will pursue that again. And the only other thing that I found is the, we did transfer 160,000 from the M E D C fund to the capital projects fund. This went towards your downtown waterline project, and we also had pay estimate number three being paid from your capital projects fund in the amount of 207,300.
And if I just add that 160,000, you mentioned that M E D C paid towards the waterline project. That was an item that was in the M E D C's annual budget, and so it wasn't history.
Was there a reason that Allen's legal fees were billed in quarterly and then monthly as well? I saw that on here for, they were billed March, and then October through February was all billed this month too.
We got a backlog that was a long time.
Gotcha.
Everything else looks pretty steady. That's all. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Number 14, city engineer report, Don Sturtevant.
Thanks, everybody. Just want to let you know with your action I have today, we'll be real happy to be cooperative and helping transition back Chris there. Our friends at work, yes, they're going to, they're going to do a fine job for you. Pretty quick, the engineers report today. I'll just highlight a few things. You have it as you were in there. The waterline project, a couple weeks back, I think there was some questions about how soon that was going to finish, and you can see here that their, the performance data ends on June 13. There might be a couple rain delays there, but they're going to wrap up 105 here pretty quick and then finish up on 149, and we should be at that, right about that time.
Don, 15, they were doing really well on schedule until rainy, yeah, rainy, rainy came, that's the last thing. My observation was that they were, they were really getting on top of the problems and took care of their time pretty well.
Yeah, they're, they're doing a daily schedule, staying on top of that, so. We hope to see them out there. A little bit of hiccup with the trap control. We made a decision with the legal doctor and rush hour, you know, when they're not working there. So a couple of good decisions there. We have approved pay estimate number four in the amount of 135,400.5 cents. That would be processed and through. Return the page over to Baja Road, water and drainage improvements. So there were some one-year punch set items that the contractor wasn't doing. So the issue on this is that the, the grant funding hasn't been turned into the city just yet, but contractors aren't going to finish until they get paid or, you know, its final payments there. So we're recommending that the city go ahead and, and pay the contractor, get him to finish those punch set items, and the grant funding will, will, will follow suit fairly quickly after that.
Is the grant funding more than what we still owe?
No, I don't think they'll pay, they won't reimburse you more than, so, I think that, so the grant funding that you're, that's due back to the city covers the last construction advancement, and also covers grant administration, that's engineering, that's already been paid. So there will be a little bit, so, so of the last grant draw, there should be money that will go into the city's account that doesn't have to get paid out because it's reimbursed.
So do you think we kind of made a little money?
No.
No.
No, it's just you had already paid invoice, and so it's just, the only thing that hasn't been paid ahead was the last pay estimate contract.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification. I just wanted to-
And any other questions on behalf of Christine? Water plant number three, notes received will be, we have the recon on, on May 12, notes received will be this week, we're expecting it this week. We'll return the contracts soon after that. She threatened.
Did I put a she's name on the record there, or we're just?
On the GLO projects, free design contract previously executed, though that's a good, good start, primarily some preliminary engineering survey of our town. Looking down the list, I think the report pretty much covers it. A couple of things that we'll probably work real closely with, reviewing plans. I know that when these came up, we'll probably just turn them over to you first and figure out, figure out what we're going to do with Richard Dean there, so. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to have Chris on, I'm very concerned.
Chris, any update on the camera truck? Where are we with? I mean, I know they closed.
Yeah, so.
I know they closed on it. I had a meeting with a developer a few weeks ago, as he mentioned on the show, working through the U C section of the C C N. Also, the last time I saw a tire, so I can text the roadrunner, so the truck has some Russian runners, so the discount tires sold to Texas State. Texas First Bank, excuse me, Texas First Bank, they were building a ranch on that side.
So if Rebecca's watching this, we need to channel M E D C for a discount tire, right?
Right. I told the guy, I was like, well, where are you putting this discount tire looking for? So we're going to keep that out.
We need a discount tire, or something?
We do need a-
Yes, we do.
There's three in Colorado, and it takes me sometimes 30 minutes to get to them.
Exactly, exactly.
All right. Council, which pleasure?
I'm making motion that we accept these departmental reports as presented.
It's been written, say that we accept the departmental reports as presented. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires mandatory vote. It's open for discussion.
On that last item, speed study, they still doing the speed study on 1097?
We will do. Now, I have, I have an engineering proposal for that, that I'm going to get right now.
All those in favor of accepting the departmental reports as presented, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept it. Departmental reports as presented. There is nothing this evening on the, in the executive session, so we can move on to council inquiry. Does council have anything?
There's a fire hydrant at Caroline and 149, right there at the entrance to Wings Over Montgomery, that has a giant hose attachment hooked on it. Is there a way to have it removed? Do we know why it's there? Is that E S D or?
It's not mine. It's, it's a rented hydrator, is what it is. So when we have a contractor coming to town, they need to get boiled water. They were coming in, put a deposit down, we got a hydrator, and we put it in the place of their truck.
Gotcha.
Whatever works best for their trucks, they need to build up.
Wings Over Montgomery's got a tight parking lot, so it, it's had a close call numerous times. I just, and I know now they have a cone marking it because it's been an issue, so.
They had issues of contractors stealing water.
I know, I remember that, too.
Regulate.
I do remember that.
I can move to adjourn?
Okay, just a minute, second, that we adjourn this meeting. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires mandatory vote. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, it's 7:47 P. M. I want you to adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much, and everyone have a great week.